Please let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting June 1, 2021. Velma, would you please call the roll?
King.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Fire Robin.
Here.
I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter the council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend Ed Mayberry to lead us in our invocation. And following our invocation, I would like to ask Alex and Cora Fire Robin and Dr. Fire Robin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're going to ask if you don't mind, stand with us for prayer. King, merciful Father, it is in the glorious and wonderful name of Jesus, our Savior, our God and Redeemer, that we are come once again, calling upon Thine holy and righteous name, acknowledging, O Lord, our God, that You are God, and beside You there is none other. We love You, O Lord, our God, because You have demonstrated Your love toward us and has brought us from such a mighty long ways. Now, Lord, as we have come together in this place once again, for the purpose, O Lord, our God, of conducting business for the city of Bristol, we pray, O Lord, our God, that You will lay Your hands upon these, O Lord, our God, our elected officials, that has been separated for the purpose of God, of leading all the people of Bristol in a way, dear God, that will be beneficial, dear Lord, and will result, dear Lord, in a wonderful place, dear God, in which we are able to live, to grow up, dear Lord, raise up children, and to prosper, O Lord, our God. We ask You, O Lord, to shine on them, O Lord, and sweep over their soul, steer them in the right pathway of life, O God, help them to know that You are God, and beside You there is no other. Now, Lord, we are saying, take control, speak to their hearts, speak to their minds, and guide their thoughts, O Lord, our God. Help us, O Lord, our God, that we will be blessed by You, that we might be able to have a future, O Lord, our God, that will be prosperous, and that You will be able to get glory out of our existence, for it is in the glorious, wonderful name of Jesus Christ, for His sake I serve and pray. Amen.
Everyone, please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We have one proclamation and one recognition on tonight's agenda. First, we have a proclamation designating the month of 2021 as Men's Health Month. I would like to ask Vice Mayor Turner to read the proclamation. And Dr. Chad Couch from Ballot Health, President and CEO of Bristol Regional Medical Center, is with us this evening to accept the proclamation.
Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas COVID-19 is destroying lives across the country, with the Centers of Disease Control reporting that males are more likely to die from this pandemic. And whereas encouraging safe behaviors, including social distancing, wearing masks, and being vaccinated, will help stop the spread of COVID-19. And whereas men have a higher suicide death rate than women, and men count for 92% of fatal workplace injuries. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men are educated about the value that preventive health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices, with progress being made over the last 20 years. And whereas Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, diabetes, mental health, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of the city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now, therefore, the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim June 2021 as Men's Health Month and encourage all citizens to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts.
Sorry, keep it brief. I just want to say thank you to the city council for helping to raise awareness for these issues, and on behalf of Ballot Health and Bristol Regional Medical Center, thank you.
We have one item of recognition on tonight's agenda. The city has over 350 full and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our latest recipients of the Bristol First Award. Mr. John Luttrell, Director of Community Relations, is present to give us a brief overview of the program and announce tonight's award winners. Mr. Luttrell.
Thank you, members of council, Mr. Sora. The Bristol First Award was first established in October of 2014 to recognize city employees for service to the public, leadership, service to other city employees, efficiency, creativity, and inventiveness. Nominations are accepted from fellow employees, elected officials, and community members throughout the year. Since the award's inception, 53 employees have been recognized for their achievements, special contributions, and dedication to public service. Tonight, we add four more names to this distinguished list. These gentlemen are members of the Rescue Four Crew with the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, and they were nominated by Dr. Matthew Clark, a Ballot Health emergency physician at Bristol Regional Medical Center. According to the nomination submission, on April 24, 2021, at an event at Bristol Motor Speedway, our recipients were called to assist a 77-year-old patient who was in cardiac arrest. The team performed CPR and advanced cardiovascular life support for nearly 25 minutes, achieving normal heart rhythm just prior to arrival at Bristol Regional Medical Center. By the time the patient was taken to the ICU, he was already beginning to follow commands and was alert and conversational the following day. Dr. Clark noted that this is a truly amazing outcome for a cardiac arrest of this duration, and speaks to very effective pre-hospital CPR and resuscitation. He passed along his thanks and congratulations for a great save to the crew of Rescue Four, and we would like to echo that this evening, as we present the Bristol First Award for June 2021, to firefighter paramedic Austin Mason, firefighter paramedic Jason Hilton, firefighter advanced EMT Chuck Wright, and firefighter EMT Tim Robinson. And Mr. Hilton is here this evening to accept his award. If you'll come join us up here.
And he made mention of the fact of we had some new equipment, that this was the first recorded save that we have with that new equipment. And that's an automatic chest compression device. And when COVID came around, chest compression devices have been so expensive that they're pretty much out of reach of a lot of agencies. But with the Corona relief funds that came through, one of the things that they made available to buy with those funds was the automatic chest compression devices. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, in that they provide perfect uninterrupted chest compressions. And two, our responders who are working on the patient using the chest compression device, that gets them a little bit further away from the patient's face, which obviously can't be covered at the time that they're working on it. So from a safety standpoint with COVID, they put those in the list of things that could be bought. And so we were able to acquire those last year for about $49,000 to go on our frontline ambulances with that COVID relief funds. And so we certainly appreciate the city council, the city management, Mr. Sora, for making things like that happen. We have some of the best cardiac advanced life support equipment that there is. And just this week, we have been blessed with a donation from Ballot Health Organization of new cardiac monitors. And we have received four of six at this point. We'll be getting a total of six of them by mid-July. And these are the latest and the greatest, and have all of the accessories really that we need in the field. And they have some accessories on them that'll be very beneficial to us in the fire service that we didn't have on the previous ones, which being able to monitor the carbon monoxide levels in our firefighters when they come out of a structured fire, we'll be able to do that with these monitors. And so, you know, you think about $49,000 that we got with Corona Relief Fund grant money, we think about six cardiac monitors, which are in excess of $180,000 for the total of them that Ballot is furnishing for us, as they are for all of the EMS agencies in their footprint. And then on top of that, the governor's grant last year, we were able to acquire a new ambulance and take a 2010 model ambulance out of service. We do have that ambulance at the station awaiting its state inspection. It's fully stocked and equipped, ready for the inspector to come by and look at it. And, you know, that ambulance, about $181,000. And when you think about all that, that's a lot of money. You're talking about around $400,000 in a COVID year, that we were able to move forward with those projects simply because of the flowing of various different sources of grant funds, and then the support, obviously, of city management and city council to allow us to be able to do that. And I can't say enough about our resources that we have working every day. Our guys and gals are some of the best that they are, if not the best, in the area, and we're extremely proud of their training level, their professionalism, and just the way they handle theirself out in the public. Thank you.
We have no presentations on our agenda this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 21-8, adopting a budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. Ordinance 21-8 will be considered later on this evening on second reading for formal adoption of the fiscal '22 budget appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2022. Fiscal '22 budget totals $133,336,586 and does reflect a decrease of $2,175,245 from the fiscal '21 budget. The proposed budget does maintain all current fees, including the solid waste fee, stormwater fee, and water and sewer fees at their current levels. As councils are aware, the 2021 is a reappraisal year, and council will need to consider establishing a property tax rate once the certified tax rate is known, and that probably will be early next month. Municipal government portion of the budget stands at $70,315,487 and reflects a decrease of $3,324,880 from the fiscal '21 budget. The budget focuses on the key themes of economic development, education, infrastructure, and public safety. The budget contains or continues all city programs and services as in the past while making strategic capital investments to meet future needs of our community. Major projects include the reconstruction of East Cedar Street, a new construction of a new fire station serving East Bristol, construction of sidewalks along Bluff City Highway from Edgemont Avenue and Lavender Lane, improvements to the bio solids handling facility at the wastewater treatment plant, and a resurfacing of approximately 14 lane miles of roadway. The budget also includes key partnerships. Among those is our continued development along with Sullivan County, Washington County, and the other two members of our Tri-Cities, the Tri-Cities Airport Aerospace Park. Also, site development in partnership with BTS and TBA for Bristol Business Park, and then improvements at Partnership Park 2, once again in partnership with our network's entity. Also, the fiscal '2022 budget includes a 2.4% market rate adjustment for all employees, and it also includes, for those employees who are off the market rate with our comp study, this will remove 50% of the remaining compression. The school system portion of the budget totals $63,021,99 and reflects an increase of $1,149,635. This increase is primarily attributable to over $11.5 million increase of funds to the School Federal Project Fund as a result of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, better known as ESRC. This matter was considered and approved by city council on first reading during the May 4 meeting, and with that, I'll entertain questions from council or the public.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, seen none? This public hearing is hereby closed. The public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 21-9, amending the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this for the public?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance 21-9 is our annual housekeeping measure where we amend funds for the fiscal '21 budget that were either received unanticipated revenues or had higher-than-anticipated expenditures. We have 12 funds to consider this evening. The first is the general purpose school fund with a revised appropriation of $42,479. The School Federal Projects Fund, which is $7,445,491. The Chapter 420 Fund at $7,900,000. The Grant Fund at $853,544. The Solid Waste Fund at $2,025,000. Street Street Aid Fund at $975,000. The Debt Service Fund at $33,165,924. And that is significant enough that it should get some explanation as I give this presentation. But as you recall, earlier in the month of May, we refunded three previous bond issues through two refunding efforts. That is included in the Debt Service Fund. And then later on this evening, you'll consider a resolution awarding $9.8 million in general obligation funds. As you're aware, our Debt Service Fund normally is about $1.2 million, which is set aside for making our annual Debt Service payments. Moving forward, the Capital Equipment Fund of $900,000, and as Chief Carrier mentioned, this includes And as Chief Carrier mentioned, this includes, like the governor's local support grant that allowed us to move forward with a lot of the equipment that Chief Carrier referenced earlier. The School Capital Equipment Fund of $19 million, and that's related to the Vance Middle School. Waterworks Fund, $8,950,000. And that incremental increase is related to the salary adjustments, the mid-year salary adjustment that went into play for those employees. And then the Stormwater Fund at $673,833. There are also several transfers that, and once again, these are housekeeping measures from the general fund to other funds that reflect grants that are received. They're receipted into the general fund side of the ledger, and then they're transferred out in support of various activities in which we received those revenues. To the Drug Fund from the general fund is $22,000. To the Grant Fund from the general fund is $299,752. To the Capital Fund from the general fund, $69,733. Capital Facilities Fund from the general fund, $750,000. A Capital Facilities Fund from the Stormwater Fund, $167,000. And to the Stormwater Fund from the general fund, $50,000. As I indicated, this is typically a housekeeping measure. It is more significant this year due to the refunding of the general obligation bonds that are referenced earlier, and then also the increased federal funds related to the COVID pandemic. And with that, I'll take questions from, from any of council or the public.
I have a question. If we could go back to, I was thinking, and didn't speak as quickly as I should have, about the budget in general. We have a 1.6% reduction in our budget. What is that attributable to?
A lot of that can be attributable to Vance Middle School or generally capital projects that change from one year to another. We estimate a certain amount of dollars that would be spent on one particular project, and it either is spent more rapidly or less rapidly than we had originally anticipated in the development of budgets. So usually, that's what you're seeing there, some sort of a crossover in that type of thing.
Okay. So if it's related to Vance, are we seeing that it was spent more quickly or less quickly?
More quickly.
More quickly, okay. So we've got $2,175,245 as a reduction of our budget. So what areas would we see that specific reduction to have come from?
Again, generally, when you look at the entire budget, and I think that's, are you, which ordinance are you referring to?
The previous one.
21-8 or 21-9?
21-8.
Okay, but, okay, let's go back to the other budget then.
Yeah, I had a question there.
Typically, when you, like I said, when you see that, it's related to large projects. Or it might be related to a reduction in federal funds. You know, again, we received substantial federal funding last year that 21-9 corrects and from a housekeeping standpoint, but a lot of those dollars, we don't anticipate going forward. Quite honestly, with the American Relief Plan and what might happen with the infrastructure plan that's working its way through Congress, we're going to go through this same exercise again next year with additional dollars that were unanticipated when the budget was developed in the spring, either the amount or how they could be spent as we move forward. So we're going to go through a similar exercise this time next year, cleaning those types of processes.
So what we could say is that we have the reduction due to the increase in federal funding that's come in the form of various grants over the past fiscal year?
We typically do that from, and it might find out not even be federal funds. If you remember, we had a significant reduction once we completed our infrastructure requirements for the Pinnacle, for example. So it could be a large capital project, it could be federal funds, it could be a large capital project like Vance Middle School. It's going to move and shift from fiscal year to fiscal year based on the plan.
Could we, could it be considered that the refunding or refinancing of the bonds that we're going to talk about a little bit earlier, does that play into this at all?
Well, you've already refunded the three bonds that we sold, two general obligation refunding bonds in May and resulted in about a $3.2 million savings in interest moving forward. So that's what's reflected in 21-9. That's not reflected in 21-8.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions from anyone? Okay, hearing none. This public hearing is hereby closed. This brings us to the parents of citizens, and since no one signed up, we'll move on ahead to appointments. We have no appointments to be made to boards or commissions on this evening's agenda, so we'll move ahead again. We have two ordinances to consider on second reading this evening. First, we have the second reading of ordinance 21-8, adopting a budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Mr. Sora summarized this issue during the public hearing this evening. Does any member of council have any additional questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
A motion to approve.
Second to approve ordinance 21-8.
Would any member of council like to further discuss 21-8?
I think it's important to note publicly, and the reasons for my questions is that this past year has been unlike any other year that we've had. All years are a challenge, but there are a lot of moving parts right now with the understanding that there are federal dollars as well as state dollars that have come to us in the form of various grants. And to make sure that everything has been covered, I think it's great that staff has been able to put together the budget that they have. And I look forward to the year and seeing how the rest of the finances coming in and being distributed work out.
I'll also just note that over the years with public service, with city councils, sometimes I've, and I think others here also have learned, it's not just what's in the budget, it's what's not in the budget. And I think this, we're going to be talking later about our tax rate once it's set with, once Sullivan County does their work, et cetera. But I think we have opportunities at this junction that we are hopefully thinking about as we contemplate moving forward with this budget. We have reappraisals that happen every four years. There's opportunity with that. Certainly, COVID, we know it has had a huge effect. We're still seeing the effects. We're going to be seeing the effects for quite some time on our citizens, on our community. But also, we are grateful at some of the things that COVID has brought us with opportunities. We heard about that tonight, Chief Carrier, with what we've had opportunities to purchase some things that it might be years before we would be able to purchase those, that equipment. And there is probably more opportunities coming along those lines. But it's also opportunity to really, we like it that we're moving forward. This council's been, for a long time, and I say that with Joel Staton back there, lots of great ideas, ways to move us forward and to be conscious of economic development and how to grow our community in many different ways and support our citizens. And to do that, we have to have funds. So I think looking forward with that and looking at things that we all have talked about, that we need, that we want, that our citizens have identified as well. And some of those, just to name a few, are our schools. We had a Trails and Greenways meeting, and that came out of citizens being interested. We know we desperately need a new swimming pool, which whether we call it Aquatic Center or a new swimming pool, we need, I think, for safety to get kids in water and swimming. And also, in this budget, we're addressing our employees' comp study to get our employees' pay, where, get it there and keep it there, where it's competitive, but even bigger than that, where our employees are provided, who give us the best in municipal services, are, receive appropriate compensation for their dedication, for their work that they do. So just pleased with our budget. It's always, we have a great process. It takes a long time, it's a lot of work, and we appreciate Tara, who's not with us, with the work that her department, the finance department, does, and I think Mr. Beavers, who heads up some of the capital budget as well as other things. Anyway, just really pleased, but we still have some things that we would love to have in our budget and our plans for next year that we'll be talking about in future work sessions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing. So I believe we're ready for a vote. Velma, would you please call the roll?
King.
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farr Robin?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the second reading of ordinance 21-9, amending the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Mr. Sora summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have questions for the staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 21-9.
A second.
Would any council member like to discuss ordinance 21-9? Hearing none. The public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we are ready for a vote. Velma, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farr Robin?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 21-47, authorizing the issuance of up to $9,800,000 in general obligation bonds. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. At your May 4 meeting, city council approved Resolution 2144, which stated the intent to issue new general obligation bonds and provided public notice of the plan borrowing in accordance with statute. Resolution 2147 authorizes the city to issue up to $9.8 million in new general obligation bonds. The resolution details the Series 2021 C bonds and calls for a fixed rate borrowing, not to exceed $9.8 million. The bonds will be sold at competitive sale. Capital projects planned for the funding with the proceeds of the sale include the funding of the balance of the new middle school. This will be split with $2.5 million from the city, which will be amortized over a 30-year period, and then $2.5 million from the school system, which will be amortized over 10 million, excuse me, over a 10-year period. There also will be the funding for a future fire station serving East Bristol that will also have an amortization schedule of 30 years, along with fire suppression equipment, including a new ladder truck and an engine. And this, the amortization of those two pieces of equipment is over a 25-year period. Mr. Scott Gibson with Cumberland Securities will serve as our financial advisor in the borrowing, and Mr. Mark Mamantov of Macberry and Sims will serve as our bond counsel. So now entertain questions. Also, Mr. Gibson is with us this evening to respond on behalf of our, as our financial advisor.
I think Mr. Gibson's done an amazing job on behalf of the city of Bristol, and we thank him most greatly. The amount of revenues that are being saved from the issuance of these bonds, reissuance of these bonds is outstanding, and we appreciate your always keeping your eye open and ear to the ground to be sure that we are very well attended. Thank you.
Are you going to talk to us, or only if, are you going to talk with us, or only if we ask questions?
I'll be happy to do whatever you want.
I think you're going to talk with us. That'd be great.
I'll be happy to entertain any questions you all may have. And as council member Powers pointed out, obviously, this resolution is for the new money, and she was referencing the refinancings we have done the last couple of years, including in 1920 and two, so far in 2021, saving the city approximately $5.4 million, which I had summarized and you have in front of you today. And so congratulations to the city, and thank you for the kind words, and thank you for letting me help you lower the cost for the taxpayers of the citizens and locking in these extremely low rates, less than 2% on all those bond issues over the last couple of years.
Can you just share that, did you share that number, Councilwoman Powers?
Yeah, so we have saved $5,458,595 based on the refinancing of some of the outstanding debt. That occurred a little bit in 2019, but mainly in 2020 and 21 as a result of the interest rates being so low and the city being primed and having the opportunity to refinance some debt that we had discussed with the council five, six, seven years ago that put us in a position to where we are today. So thank you very much.
I think, as you shared with us at our work session, that it, and it's a little bit like Chief Carrier's story, it's different pieces that come together. So it's the expertise of you and your company, and then also the interest rates that we've been fortunate to have, and just the timing of things. So I think several things coming together, but we appreciate very much your looking after us.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any member of council have a question for staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve Resolution 2147, please.
I'll second. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 21-47? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Velma, please call the roll.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farr Robin?
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have the minutes of the May 4, 2021 city council meeting, minutes of the May 25 city council work session, Resolution 2148, awarding a proposal for reinsurance of the self-funded health insurance plan, Resolution 2149, approving an agreement with McDonough LLC to lease space for the employee health clinic, Resolution 2150, approving an interlocal cooperation agreement, the emergency communication district of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, Resolution 2151, awarding a bid for the purchase of two ADA compliant medium-duty transit buses, Resolution 2152, authorizing a purchase of software support for GIS, Resolution 2153, authorizing entry into commercial lease for office space with City Center LLC, and Resolution 2144, approving an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the maintenance of state highways.
Would any member of council like to have any item removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Velma, would you please call the roll?
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Farr Robin?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have Dr. Tudor with us from Bristol, Tennessee School System to give us an update on what's going on in our schools.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Just a few things to share with you this evening. We are having vaccination clinics for, specifically for our students, but they are actually publicly open to anyone, staff, families, parents, or anyone in the community. So I just wanted to draw attention to that. Kingsport City Schools is having, hosting their vaccination clinic at Robinson Middle School tomorrow and Thursday of this week. Bristol City Schools will host those at Tennessee High School on June 7th and 8th of next week, and then Sullivan County Schools hosting at Central High School on June 9th and 10th. This is the Pfizer vaccine for individuals ages 12 and up. So this is the first vaccine, and there'll be a second vaccine three weeks later. So just encourage our, we're encouraging certainly our students and our families to get involved in that, but we also have opportunities for the community. If you're out and about at any of those locations in Sullivan County, you're welcome.
What was the times?
It is from 9:00 to 3:00 on those days. Two days at each location, back to back, and then three weeks later. We are and then three weeks later. We are offering free meals to our families this summer, so that will run, it started today and will run through July 23. The locations are on our website, so we're fortunate that we have the opportunities to offer free meals to our families again this summer. We also are able to bring back the book bus this summer in partnership with the Bristol Public Library. Our students will be able to visit the book bus at a variety of locations also, which are on our website. But we are allowing our students to keep those books for their home libraries this time. They don't, I think in years past, they've swapped them out. Now, they get to keep those and expand their home libraries, which is exciting for them. We have registration up into new students, so if anyone is interested in joining our school district, they can visit our website and go ahead and register for school. We started summer school today. We invited well over 500 students in grades 1 through 11 onto our campuses. We're hosting our elementary summer school at Fairmount, and our secondary, which includes middle and high school, is located at Tennessee High School this year, and we've had wonderful turnout and support from our families for those opportunities. Lots of exciting things happening this summer. And then finally, I'd just like to publicly, again, thank our staff, our teachers, our support staff, administrators, school board certainly, for just enduring a really challenging school year. We're glad it's behind us, certainly, but we have lots of things to celebrate, even though it was a very challenging year, and certainly the support of the community and embracing us and supporting our staff has been tremendous. So, thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, the first item I'd like to discuss with council is we need to have a called meeting for the appointment of board of directors to our destination marketing organization. I would like to suggest either Wednesday, June 9, or Thursday, June 10. I think one of you mentioned prior to the meeting that maybe perhaps a time later in the afternoon might meet their needs best, but I think it's important to go ahead, there's a significant amount of work ahead for this newly constituted board. In the earlier that we could have this meeting, the better. We do need to have ample time for public notification, which if you make that decision tonight, will provide that for us. So, if neither of those dates work, if you could suggest some dates, that would be helpful.
I could do later in the afternoon. I am unable to do either day at noon.
I'm good either day.
I could do in the afternoon on either day, preferably, probably the 10th.
What are the two dates?
Wednesday, June 9, or Thursday, June 10?
At 4:00.
We didn't say what time, but.
If you so desire.
Well, I can do 4:00 on Tuesday, but not on Wednesday or Thursday.
You can.
But I could do lunch on Wednesday or Thursday.
I can do Tuesday.
And Vince couldn't do lunch either day. What about, what about maybe early in the morning? I know you've got a networks meeting on Wednesday, the 9th, but perhaps Thursday, the 10th?
What, like at 8:00, 8:30, 9?
Your call.
Can you do Tuesday, Chad?
I can do Thursday.
Okay.
Hey.
What time?
Your call. 8:00, 8:30, 9:00, 9:30, what the pleasure, council?
Let's do 9.
Thursday, the 10th at 9:00?
9:00, okay.
Does that work for you, Vince?
10th at 9:00 p.m., and this will be a called meeting rather than a work session for the purposes of actually making the decision on that. So, and that's at 9:00. We'll do that in the, in the annex conference room.
And this is focused on the tourism?
Yeah, this is the appointment of the board of directors for the, the new DMO.
So, it'll be set at 9:00?
Also, we're.
10th at 9:00.
From our work session last week, there were, there were several, there were two other meetings that you asked for us to set up. One of the things that I really needed to do that was a list of closed dates, or dates that you're available, either one, just make it clear to me, for June and July. I know there's a desire to meet with the school board. I know they still have some, some work to do before they're ready for that meeting, but either June or July, please provide those dates, which you are either available or unavailable, just properly note that. And then also for, for a meeting then with Mayor Venable regarding the, the new regional EDO hub. So, also, on Wednesday, June 23, at 11:30 a.m. in the Steel Creek Park Lodge, we will have our second luncheon of the year with area residential builders and developers to discuss recent changes in our zoning ordinance. As you recall, council made several changes regarding setbacks and use by right in, in the B3 zone in particular for multifamily dwellings. We want to make sure that all of our development professionals are aware of those changes, and we'll, and as we've committed you before, we're trying to do a couple of those a year. Also, we've got our work session on Tuesday, June 22, at 11:00 a.m. Would you like to continue that meeting in the annex conference room, or would you like another location such as the Nature Center? I know Slater Center has reopened, so the cafeteria might not be the best, especially at that time of day, might not be the best.
I'd rather go back to the annex if possible.
That's y'all's call.
The Nature Center is beautiful, but it's.
I will be gone that day.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll look at the annex conference room. And then lastly, you have an invitation in front of you this evening for a farewell party for our police chief. Chief Wade is retiring on Friday, June 18, after 37 years of service to this city, 17 of which he served this community as the chief of police. So, he has a very long and prestigious career in law enforcement. This is the only local law enforcement that Blaine has worked with. He did have a very brief stint with Virginia Division of Wildlife as a game warden, and then came right back to us. And so, we've, we've been very, very fortunate to have his professionalism and his leadership with our police department for a number of years. We're going to talk a lot about Wade, about Blaine during that, during that period. On Friday, June 18, from 1:30 to 3:30, we're going to celebrate his career, and that will be in our cafeteria next door here at Slater Center. With that, chief, we're going to miss you. And Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Counsel comments?
I'll just pick up on Chief Wade, just to say a few things. Nobody's asked me to do a toast or a comment yet on the 18th, so anyway, but I've.
It's common, though.
I've known Chief Wade since I've been on council and maybe before, and know he and his family and his children through different church and Sunday School activities, his daughter through Bristol Youth Council, et cetera. But just wanted to give credit for the accreditation that our department has. That is a lot to be able to do. That is something that we all are very proud of, and it does take our department to a standard that doesn't happen with all departments across our country. So, he has been leading that for some time, and the original accreditation was with Chief Wade, thank you.
That was with Chief Wambler.
Oh, while you were here.
That was with Chief Wambler.
There you go, with Chief Wambler, but he was on the team that did that. So, something to be very proud of. And just also the professionalism of Chief Wade, and that has, that's the culture of our department, and that's for himself, the department, citizens who are treated fairly with equity. And I can say, recently, as a city council member, I received a ticket just like anybody else for going too fast in a neighborhood, which I regret. But that people are treated how they should be treated, no exceptions, that we really appreciate that, and sometimes that's hard to accept. It wasn't hard for me. It was what needed to happen, but some folks do have difficulty accepting that they don't get special treatment, or that it was good excuses or whatever. So, I think that is definitely part of the standards that we hold, and that's part of being accredited, and it's part of the, what we've come to expect, but it's not always the expected. So, just really wanted to say thank you for what you've done to keep this department on a great road and continue it forward. So, thank you.
Unfortunately, I will.
Go ahead, Vince.
No, I'm just going to say thank you. Unfortunately, I will be out of town, and I will miss the event, but thank you for all the years of service, and we do appreciate it.
I'll follow up and ditto all of those comments, and I tell you, it's a difficult time to be a police officer right now. So, it's really to all of our police, appreciate all your hard work and everything that you, that you do for our citizens. And that goes out also to our paramedics, our firefighters as well, for a great, a great account of what happened during the races with our four paramedics. And I really appreciated all the comments that Mike Carrier made about our staff and, and what they do, and all their training that they do as well. And I'll just finish up by saying that it was a great Memorial Day weekend. I hope everybody had a super time. I'm sure a lot of folks are on vacation this week, but I think it's really special that we honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice for, for all of us in our countries, and our hats off to all of our veterans who have served as well.
And I would just follow up by saying, I have been the beneficiary of almost all of the different departments of our great community. In regard to the fire, the police department, I think we're very fortunate. Our police department has been integrated in our schools. We learn, as a former school teacher, you know, through the DARE officers, we've learned to, to respect and value the fact that our officers are getting up every morning and putting their life at risk to protect ours, and thank you very much. I too have been the recipient of a traffic violation here in Bristol, and, you know, it was fair, you know, deserved so, and appreciate the constant patrol. You see people just flying in their cars around town, and, you know, it's just one child stepping out in the street. It's just one person trying to cross that's unable to, and a tragedy takes place. I'd like to thank Jason Hilton. I was thinking about if I were in cardiac arrest for 24 minutes, would I have much hope? And obviously, in the city of Bristol, there is much hope for, for that type of incident. And so, to our administrators who have latched on to these different grants to afford us with the equipment, with the training, and with the quality of associates affiliated with the city, I thank you for that. And to our school system, you know, it's, it's hard being a teacher these days. It's hard for many reasons. COVID is one of many. It's in trying to assure a well-rounded curriculum and knowing that it's, it's fair, fairly represented to all of our students. And I think that y'all have gone above and beyond in trying to assure each child's education as well as their safety, whether it's physical safety or food safety and, and housing as well. I know that y'all go well above and beyond. You know, the function of the city is to provide, and I learned this very early on, safety, we've talked about, education and infrastructure. I'd like to recommend, compliment Mr. Beavers and all of our public works department in constantly working to provide us with quality infrastructure. Bristol, I believe, is an exceptional place to live. We have a staff that works diligently, as evidenced by our budget. The budget process began the 1st of November, if not even a little bit earlier, and Tara did have a lot to do with that. She will be missed greatly. But Danielle, our attorney, city attorney, has a lot to do with that as well. So, we are ending FY '21, right? Have I got my years right? On a very good note, having come through a very difficult year, and for that, I thank all those involved.
Just follow.
Just, I lost my turn. I just also wanted to note Memorial Day and the, being able to take time and hopefully with, hopefully next year, we'll be able to do even a better job here in Bristol to commemorate Memorial Day. And this year, I think around our country, commemorated also with some of our other folks who have given their lives through our COVID pandemic, the healthcare workers who gave their lives in service, the essential workers who had to continue working and gave their lives. So, I think it gave us opportunity to take a minute and take a breath and think about it. The other thing I was just going to say is I was pleased to attend the Tennessee High graduation this year, and I don't get there every year these days, and it was excellent occasion. And know that the, the ones that graduated this year had a year and a half, year and a half a semester of COVID. And I know that many of those kids who succeeded struggled a lot, and that there were some who did not make it for that graduation day, who are still working to see their life journey. And I know not only is that hard on the students, but hard on the teachers and the school system to know that a lot of those students would not have had that path had it not been for COVID. So, and also the speeches that were given by the scholars. We have some very, very great students and future citizens coming up with their insights and their kindness and their observations, et cetera. So, just congratulations to the school system for the graduation event, and to all those seniors who, who have made it through some tough times and are starting their next journey forward. So, thank you, sorry.
Anything else?
No, I'm done. Thanks.
Now, I'd like to follow up, you know, kind of what everybody's saying, but, you know, two things, just sitting here thinking, is that, you know, the professionalism that we have in our public safety, fire and rescue, police department, I think it's a model. I think a lot of cities would, would love to have what we've got. And I know it, it takes a lot of dedication from everyone that's, from the chief on down to all the, you know, the first responders, to the police officers on the street. You know, it is, it is a tough job. It's getting tougher and tougher every day. But they're to be commended, and with that, any support that this council, or as far as I'm concerned, this council can do, always come forward and ask us for it and talk to us. But you are to be commended. Like to also reflect back on Veterans Day. I was invited this past Saturday to attend a memorial, war memorial dedication at Bluff City, and it was very, very moving. Just look around, and just look into the eyes of some of the people that was there, and knowing what they had suffered, you know, during the past. But it was just, you know, it was a ceremony that I'll remember for a long time, but it was just, it was just wonderful. I walked away just feeling so good about it, and so good about our military and all of our veterans. School system, can't say enough about what, what goes on at Bristol, Tennessee High School, and, or across the entire Bristol, Tennessee school system. And, you know, I think that's another model that a lot of people would like to pattern after us. So, you know, Bristol's got a lot of great things going on. It's just unbelievable, you know. I think there, there's a lot of envy and a lot of jealousy of what we're doing around here. And just, you know, our entire staff, city staff, all the departments work so hard. There's, there's no, there's no challenge that they will not face. And in some cases, you know, they, they try too hard. But, but again, it's just, you know, a credit to the individuals and to the departments. With that, I also like to thank Mr. Mayberry for attending tonight. It's, it's been a while since we've seen, seen him at our council meeting, so it's been a while since we've seen anybody at our council meetings. So, it's good to see him and really appreciate your, your delivery and invocation tonight.
So, it's good to see him, and really appreciate your, your delivery and invocation tonight. I'd like to recognize Mayor Staten back there in the back with his beautiful wife, Peg, and it's always a pleasure seeing them here. So, with that, we're going to call it an evening, and this meeting is adjourned.